I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have members Tim Paulus, Crystal Brackey, John Ashmead, Peter Tensing, Paula Cole, we have Superintendent Yunowski, and I am Chair Christine Malik. I would like to remind us of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." And we will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. We will start with review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
My motion by Mr. Paulus, as I could buy Ms. Brackey. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. We will start out with information and proposals and non-action items, reports and information from school sources, and the superintendent update.
Right, so obviously, we are meeting on the first day of school. And so just briefly, it was a very successful first day. Our students thrived despite the rain. We are excited at, currently on paper, we're looking a little bit above our projection, around 40 students. Now, just as a reminder, that fluctuates greatly over the next week as students enter our classrooms, and we see who all the students who actually are, and also new students enter our organization. Something exciting things also to note are that our class sizes are looking to be aligned to what we were looking for, which is to take some reductions based on our referendum funding. We have class sizes significantly lower in almost all of our elementary classrooms. I believe 28 is in one classroom, with only 127 in one grade, and most of our classes are lower than that, with averages significantly at 25 or below. And we also then added additional FTE to our sixth grade, where we have a pretty large influx of additional sixth graders coming into our organization this year. So we added some FTE to the middle school to help reduce the anticipated class sizes. Just as a reminder, we'll get a little bit more preliminary data in a couple weeks. And then our October 1 count will come to us with some of those official numbers in the month after. With that, it's time for us to look back at some of the things we had going over the summer with our targeted services, which happen after school, and then also our summer schools. So I'm going to invite up Dr. Roby and the team from the Targeted Services After School Program to begin that conversation about targeted services. I'm watching this opportunity.
Good evening, Board members. Happy first day, happy new year. Behind me, I have our coordinators of our after-school Extended Year and After-School Extended Day Program, Joy Waters, Teresa Statham, Melissa Ness, and Erin Burgraff. One of our peer reviewers, RSEP, which is on the Normandale campus, our instructional coach who works at RDLS, and Erin, who is one of our middle school educators. And they're going to talk about the summer school programming, as well as give you a preview of what we expect this year for our Extended Day and our Extended Learning Program. So I'm going to let the ladies take over, and then I will be back at the end.
Perfect, thank you. So my name is Joy Waters. I will be talking about our after-school programming, which starts October 23rd and runs through May of 2019. So in the beginning of this PowerPoint, just to kind of remind of what the mission is for targeted services, is really we're targeting those at-risk students, and so really looking at students that are usually in the red and yellow on their MAP scores. Some of the key aspects of targeted services is that it does have to be run either before school or after school. Programming, like curriculum, it has to be different. And it's usually, what our idea is to design something different than the traditional Some of the goals and things that we're trying to work on is really get more parent and community involvement to really help our students get up to grade level, improve themselves. So some of the things, just to wrap up from last year, looking at attendance, looking at some of our student data, we do a teacher survey at the end of the year, and then also look at what changes that we have going forward for this year. So attendance, our attendance fluctuated, and this is an area that usually typically happens a lot in targeted services, and so finding the best programming and curriculum is really important. So if you look at, you know, Centennial started with 50, went up to 55. RDLS was our highest at 85, went down to 80. STEM started at 80, went down to 70. Sheridan, 45, went up to 50. The middle school is really our focus this year. That one started, obviously you can see, at 60 and went down to 25. And one of the things, reasons for that is that the middle school does have a lot of after-school activities, and so we can't require students to be in, definitely suggest. And so if they have an option to go to soccer, or you know, chess club or something, some students are choosing those activities versus going to math or reading. So some of the programming we're looking at for the middle school particularly is more hands-on, things like robotics that'll target like that math and science, and then more computer-based programs. So Read Naturally Live is one of the programs that will help with reading levels. These are the programs that we did last year at each building. So you can see Centennial had grades 2 through 5. RDLS had 2 through 5, and then picturing and writing, which definitely takes place during the day. Picturing and writing will not, no longer be in an after-school programming, just because they do a lot of that during the day. So we didn't want to saturate the day with after-school as well, and then they also have it in summer school. So the data, and just the schedule of information, kind of what we did for last year is that kids took, they had to take a pre-test, and then they take a post-test. And with the pre and post-test, this is another area where we're trying to improve. So we want to find out what kids know coming into it, so working with Mike Wallace, our Director of Math, to find out. He came up with a pre-test, we had kids take that in April. 23rd was the post-test. We did use the same test. I know that was a question that someone had about, you know, kids that already scored a 7 out of 7, did we give them another test? One of the things that we looked at was we just asked kids that did score a 7 to show multiple ways to kind of answer those questions. And so that's just something, as we grow and kind of get better at our pre and post-test, we find better ways to show the scores. It just shows you a little bit of the schedule that we had. You know, kids would have snack every day before, and we did have it on Wednesday, Thursday last year. And so a change we'll talk about in just a minute. So some of the data going forward here, I will just share it with you, and I apologize it's not in the slides. So the pre-test, just some information with Centennial, we did end with 55 students, but with the fluctuation of attendance, what typically happens is kids will drop, and so we're, we go by membership. So a kid could show up, and after three weeks, their membership will drop. And so sometimes when we get to the post-test, we don't have the same kids that we started with. And so that's the trick, is how do you best display the data to show authentically what our kids are doing? So again, me learning and using the data, we're trying to figure out the best way to do that. But some of the scores, like with pre-tests, you know, kids starting in a score of 0 to 3 was like 62% for Centennial. So if you just scroll to the next one. So when they took the post-test in April, 0 to 3 went, dropped significantly to 32%. And again, students that, for the pre-test, that had a score of 4 to 7 was about 34%. When they reached the post-test, 4 to 7, 66%. So definitely seeing a growth in Centennial. And I mean, I could go through each building, and I think what I'll probably do is if you want the data, I have a separate sheet I can just email out, that shows exactly from each school, some of the things that took place. So then the middle school, what was a little bit different? We tried and used the MAP scores with the middle school. And so for them, we started with 60, and like I mentioned before, dropped down to 25 students at the end. So we had 39 sixth graders start, 15 seventh graders, and six eighth graders. So that's another area where this year, we're going to combine seventh and eighth together to try to get a bigger group. Our sixth grade group typically tends to be bigger. So with sixth grade, 75% made growth in looking at their MAP scores. 22% did not make growth. So in the yellow is the did not make growth, the pink or purple is made growth, and then if they got to grade level on their MAP scores is in green. With seventh grade, 46% made growth. 46 also did not make growth, and then there was about 6.7 that was at grade level. And then finally, at eighth grade, and eighth grade's a small sample size, only six students, so 83% made growth, 16.7 did not make their growth. So again, the pre and post-test, because District 287 does not require, does not have a specific way of demonstrating that or showing what they want, it's kind of up to the schools to create that. So that's something, and Melissa and I have been working on, is, you know, what's the best way to test kids to find out if they've made growth? And so that's something we're going to keep working towards. Some of the last things, surveys we did, you know, just shows number of years of teachers that have served, student satisfaction, teacher satisfaction. We had five coordinators, and then myself. And so I won't go through all of it, just some couple key points to point out is, we typically, for after-school programming, have been getting new teachers to participate. And so something that we wanted to change was we want to be able to get those veteran teachers to be teaching, because if we're working with students that are below grade level, typically the newer teachers, not that they're not qualified, but they're new to our district, they have a lot on their plate, so we typically want to get some veteran teachers in there. So some of the things that we did was, we changed it from Wednesday, Thursday to Tuesday, Thursday. We changed it so that they could job-share. So if one teacher wanted to do Tuesday, the other teacher wanted to do Thursday, they could do that. And some other things that were in there was, as far as like the schedules, finishing up before testing season. So we did two eight-week sessions, and so Tuesday, Thursday will start October 23rd, and we're avoiding like conference week, we're avoiding any like MEA or any of those weeks where they have things going on. And with that, it's just, we'll hope that we'll have teachers that are energetic, and teachers that, you know, are ready to help the kids, but then also that our kids aren't getting tired out. And so when they come, they're energetic, and they, they're learning and improving. So then changes, like I said, we started in the summer. So something I noticed, because obviously during the school year, my position is a peer reviewer, so I don't have the, you know, capacity to spend every day just doing targeted services. So one thing we did was we took the MAP scores from the spring to just qualify students. So get a list of students that were in red and yellow, and then from there, we could start that pre-registration process. So that way, I have a list right now, I can start getting transportation set up, start figuring out how many teachers we need. So a lot of that work got done this summer, and because I also work summer school with Melissa, I was able to do a lot of that work. Like I said, no, no picture in writing this summer. And so for the four elementary schools, we're using a program called Imagine Learning, Language and Literacy. And like I mentioned before, the pre and post-test, we're trying to find the best one that will demonstrate the data. So on Imagine Learning, what's great about it is kids take a pre-test in the program. It'll tell you what areas of reading that they need to improve on. And then the teacher pulls activities that are already in the system to help support the students. So then when they get to the post-test, it's also on the program. So it's recreating it for them, so it's less work for us, but it's a research-based program. Middle school, as I mentioned, are going to use the robotics for the math and science, and Read Naturally Live for the reading program. So for the elementaries, there'll be about 20 to 25 in a classroom, but with our schedule, they're actually, the classroom is split in half. So half of the 40 minutes, kids are in the lab, the other half is with the teacher, and then they flip-flop. So the teacher will never have 25 students at the same time. The lab will be supported by, you know, instructional para, and then the teacher can work in smaller groups. Shows that we increased the hours from an hour and 40 to two hours at the elementary school. And the middle school, we'll stay the same at about 45 minutes. And so on these sheets here, you can go through, it just talks about what Imagine Learning Literacy is, really works on the four core reading elements, phonemic awareness, phonics, reading fluency, vocabulary, listening and reading. And our goal is really to get kids to that comprehension, and so this program does a really good job of that. And this just lays out, like I said, what it suggests, 30 to 40 minutes a week, and And so kind of lastly in here, just goes through the schedule. So for Centennial and Sheridan, since they get out at 2:40, shows that they have snack. And then from there, they're going to do, we're working on the social-emotional piece to also align with the district's mission. And what kids will do is we have an activity that they'll work on as a class, similar to what you do for morning meeting, but it'll be like an after-school meeting. So they'll spend about 10 minutes doing that before they break into their groups. And so the teacher with the test and the data can really break kids into those two groups to meet their needs. So kids that are working at a higher level can be in one group, kids that are working maybe a little bit lower can be in the group as well. And then STEM and RDLS, as you can see, end at 2:10, so there's similar, broken into those two groups, but also focusing on that social-emotional piece first. And just back through with middle school's going to go through, and their schedule. I know I went through that fast, but I want to make sure summer's going to be up there. So any questions at all?
I'm curious about the, you did talk about the identification process, and it sounds like there's a sort of two-step process of using the MAP scores to identify your goal of qualifying students. And then is there like, is this like an opt-in or opt-out, or how do we then end up with the students out of those qualified students who are actually participating?
So with targeted services, we have what's called the GI codes. And so kids can qualify based on that, and it could be, maybe you can help touch on that, if they're working below grade level, in the overall grade level, or it could be on a test, it could be the student is homeless, I mean, there's a bunch of codes that they they go by. So if it's 18 different codes, or 17 different codes, homelessness, it's anything that could be defined as at risk. Might have a parent who's incarcerated, I think that's one. Be the product of a teen parent, even though they're apparently not, even if they're teen at the time, they're involved. So it's all these different codes that oftentimes where children may be a little bit more at risk, and to make sure that we're providing the extra resource.
So, and then, raises the second thing, are the codes imported from a funding perspective to secure the funding for the program?
Yes. They have to qualify for at least one of those 17 to 18. So the reasoning behind using the MAP scores is it allows us to get a list right away, and then what the next step, because I think you asked if there's a next step in there. So with the list right now, what I'm doing is I send them to building principals to take a look at, the special ed leads in each building, because one of the things with targeted services is, if you have students who have IEPs, targeted services, we are not required by law to follow their IEP. We try to do the best we can, but, you know, we don't have the support after school and during summer that they do during the day. So we ask that the special ed leads recommend, you know, if there's students on there that, you know, we can help. Then we also have social workers that look at that list as well. So there's a bunch of i's on there, but every kid gets a registration form, and the parents can opt in or out if they choose to. So we do our best to accommodate for anyone who qualifies. And we haven't really had a problem in the past, so.
Great. And it sounded like, and then I guess I, there was at least a mention that transportation was part of your thought process as well?
Yep, so any student that already has special transportation, whether it's a TCT or a special ed, that's what the social worker helps with, because they can get that set up. So if they have it for, during the day, they do get it for after-school as well. And then we do have the, obviously, the regular buses that we do set up.
You'd mentioned on one of the slides, the 67 hours and the, that are available, and the, you know, the plan to split it into two groups. So 67, is that set by the, by the funding, and that's, that's literally all we can give it, or is?
So we have a total of 187 hours that a student can be in targeted services, whether it be after-school or summer school. So with Melissa, with summer school, she has, what did we say, 125? So once you take 125 off, then my portion is whatever's left of the hours. We can split it up however we want. We could make summer school shorter, after-school longer, it's really up to us.
And you mentioned, so, no, go ahead.
That's sent by MDE.
And Peter had mentioned the qualifications and the classifications for the students. Is that, does that emerge for, you know, we have the two eight-week sessions, do students qualify? So we could possibly have different, different groups of kids coming in for the first eight-week session as the second, if situations changed?
So for this, we're actually, we're actually keeping the same students. It's more of a flexibility for the teachers to be able to teach one session and job-share with a teacher in the next, but ideally, we'd keep the same students in. But if there was a student that could only do the first one, they certainly can do that.
Okay, so we would allow someone to enter?
We could allow somebody to fill their spot, yes, absolutely.
Oh, on the scoring on the pre-test and post-test, the 0 to 7, do those represent anything relating to grade level? Or are they just, that, just, you know, this score, this score, this score?
So originally, because Mike Wallace had made up the pre-test, and it was out of, there were seven questions that they asked. So typically, the first one was maybe grade level or a little bit below, and it progressively got harder. That was typically what we tried to do with the questions, so.
And I guess, maybe the deeper data would contain this, but while it looks, visually it looks like there was, there was growth across the board, were there any students who slid back, or went?
Yeah, and so that's what I included on here, and again, I apologize, I didn't have that in there, but for most of the schools, like Centennial, every student, all 53 improved their score. For RDLS, there was only four out of the 80 that did not improve their score. For STEM, only three students out of 70 did not. Sheridan, all students improved from the pre to the post-test. And then the middle school one, that's the one where I didn't have time to go through the maps, or from the pre to the post, because we've, but for most, most students improved, and we saw a lot of growth, definitely.
That's great, thank you.
Which map periods are you, because I'm trying to figure out, how do you account that the growth was for the program, and how much was for the time period that happened between, let's say, the winter scores and the spring scores?
No, great question. So they looked at from the fall of last year to the spring. And so that's the thing, is we allowed them to use the MAP scores, because they had asked if they could use MAPs for their pre and post-test. Typically, we, we want something that's more aligned with the curriculum that we're using for that reason alone. We don't know exactly if what the work we did in after-school was the only reason. Particularly, it probably wasn't, because they've been in school the entire year. So that's not something I would say we'd use going forward for our pre and post, because we can't determine the generation.
I mean, it has, MAP has learning targets, and definitely resources that teachers can use, but I think for measuring the, what we're doing, I mean, definitely after-school, it has to, right? You have a smaller ratio, you have more of the technology and intervention curriculums and whatnot, but I like to see how, maybe later, if we have a shorter period to measure, maybe to catch more kids who, you know, that stay true, how we can engage families to make the case that this is really a priority, as, you know, as to that, thank you.
Thank you, because you addressed one of my questions in your presentation, which was about the drop-off rate at the middle school, so I appreciated that. And then the other thing that I was just thinking about is you were sharing, and it's probably a little bit too early to know, but how the Imagine Learning Language and Literacy curriculum aligns with the Lucy Cockens curriculum that I know is being rolled out across the district. And just thinking about it, both from the student learning perspective and from the staff, of thinking about working across those different curricula.
And so I worked with Kasia on this, with this program, who St. Paul uses. They use it district-wide. So that's definitely something I can, I can follow up with. Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know a lot about Imagine Learning, but from what I've seen, from what Joy has shown, it aligns more closely with the PRAS model, which we adopted last year, than it does with the core instruction of Reader's Workshop, because it's more skill-based, and it goes through the five skills of reading, staying with PRAS.
So we are going to move into summer programming. My name is Melissa Ness, and I coordinated summer programming for the district. However, I was, I will be presenting on elementary, and then we have our site coordinators. Erin will present about the middle school, and Trace will present about the high school. So, let's get started. So we're just going to talk about summer school and how it aligns to the RPS mission and strategic plan. We'll talk about our data, and then our goals for next year. So our mission and our vision is very closely aligned to the district vision, learn, grow, and excel. And the piece that we like to include in summer school is that it's very science-based, and we use project-based learning and experiential learning. So elementary program is at our STEM. We have science-based curriculum for all of the grade levels, and each grade level has a different science theme. So you can see them there. Each, each grade level has a different project that they work on. And then those are also aligned and integrated with literacy and math. Students, each grade level takes two, two field trips related to their science theme. And then here's our schedule. You can kind of, it, it follows sort of like a normal school day, where they have a specialist class, art, music, computer literacy, PE, math games outside. They also have a literacy block, a math block, and then recess and lunch. So in summer, we follow PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program. And we introduce this through a video for the students, and then throughout the summer, students are able to earn Spartan Pride tickets for academics or for behavior. And every, every week, we draw names at the end of the week, and that helps us build a really strong cohesive community right in the beginning, and that help, that's a five-week program, and then at the end, students get a, we, we create a school-wide goal that we always attain, and then at the end, all the kids get to earn their school-wide goal, which this year was pizza for lunch and, yeah. So we have our jump program in summer school, which is join us for math and picturing and writing. A select group of EL students are in a separate classroom, and they learn with the picturing and writing curriculum all summer long. And then those are just some facts, some logistical facts. So this is our ILP. Each student is required by MDE to have an individual learning plan, so we have that. There's a writing section, a math section, and a social-emotional section. And teachers are engaged in weekly PLCs around those goals. It's a great picture. We also have interventionists that work during the summer, so they pull or push, they push in or pull out small groups of students in math and literacy during the school day. There's a copy of the ILP. So this is something that each teacher fills out at the beginning and at the end of summer school. And then this is something that we're required to have by MDE. And then here's a quick snapshot of our data. So we, the last two years, have really focused on student intervention, the interventionist positions, and trying to determine whether or not they are effective in summer. And this snapshot shows that they, they are effective. The intervention process and the things that the intervention teachers do during summer are really important and really effective. The intervention process and the things that the intervention teachers do during summer are really important and really effective. And then this is for students in general, not at intervention, but just in general, how many students may grow. And that's our staffing for the summer. We had three math interventionists, three reading interventionists, and then one interventionist that was just for the DLI program, dual-language version. And then here are some of our survey results. For administrative team. And then what some of the comments staff made about PLCs. Some comments about our PBIS program in the summer. So one of the things that came up over and over in the survey was that the field trips, there is one field trip that every single grade level went on, it was to the Minnesota Wildlife Refuge. The feedback for the second year in a row on that field trip was not great. Teachers, the, the staff at Minnesota Wildlife Refuge didn't have a lot planned for our staff, and our staff felt like they went there and the programs that they were offering did not really follow through as expected. So we are going to look into exploring either a different program at the same place or a different place. And then we also want to revisit our literacy, math, and math pre-imposed assessments to better align with our curriculum that we have in the summer.
Hello, I'm Erin Bergeroff, and I have the good fortune to direct our summer school program at the middle school this year. We were all hosted at RMS, so all students were there. We really focused on project-based learning, both small and large group supports. Our ELs all received picturing and writing curriculum, or at least the, I think, Truism Mind Master was able to kind of pick the kids who would be best served by that program. We had STEM instruction for students in grades seven and eight. Team building and social-emotional learning for our sixth graders. And then a continued focus on writing and some field trips to kind of enhance learning and sparks some curiosity. So our overview, this is hard to read from where you are, but our schedule really ran, kids have three long blocks of class. So for our seventh and eighth graders, they all received language arts and math, and then their STEM course. And our sixth graders also had language arts and math. And then they went between social-emotional learning, which was the mindfulness curriculum, and team-building class. And they really liked the team-building because they got to move. So that's something moving forward, I hope that we can incorporate more of that for all of our students, because it was really a perk during the day for our kids. So in terms of the social-emotional learning, our sixth graders, again, participated in 10 days of mindfulness, because we were really only, we were packed into 20 days. And then the other piece, they, they went on to the team-building class. Picturing and writing was a really helpful way to facilitate writing and reading instruction for ELs. And then, again, the eighth graders, seventh and eighth graders received STEM curriculum from some really seasoned science teachers in our building. So that was also a great opportunity for those kiddos. And we had Chromebooks, everybody had a device this summer. So that was helpful for all teachers in terms of implementing some technology and really getting the kids geared up for what they'll experience in the classroom this year. So that was a nice way for them to practice using those devices. Our field trips were fantastic. Our sixth graders had an opportunity, every single sixth grader got to go to Camp Kichyapi down in Prior Lake. And they loved that because they got to participate in things like archery, they did some hiking. There's a ropes course there that they did. So that was really hands-on and really, I think, pulled together the team-building and the mindfulness that they had done, because they were out in nature, but they were also working together to troubleshoot and problem-solve. And then our seventh and eighth graders had a great opportunity. We partnered with Best Buy Children's Foundation and the Geek Squad Academy. So every single seventh and eighth grader had a chance to take a two-day field trip. It was completely free of charge to our kids. And they received lunch, they attended this at Target Field. And there were members of Best Buy Geek Squad who instructed the kids in things like coding. They did some film production, they mixed digital music, they did some 3D design. And really kind of learned how all those things that they're learning in the classroom can be applied to careers in the future. And so that was a neat opportunity for the kids to get off-site and do something that they wouldn't otherwise have a chance to do, interact with other adults, there were also students there from other schools. And another perk of that field trip was that it pulled families into the mix, because every kid received two tickets to a Twins game. And so after their program was over at, with Geek Squad Academy, they got to take a parent or another family member to a Twins game. So that was a neat way for the kids to experience our community in a different way. Our ILP was very complex, and I think that's one of my goals in terms of looking ahead, is to streamline the ILP a bit, but to also use technology to track our students and their progress, so that not only can the ILP be shared with families more readily, but also shared with teachers, because these were all paper forms. And I think if we could get these in a digital format, it could also follow the student into the next school year so that teachers would really get a look at what kids achieved during summer school. And I think, again, it would just be easier for parents to access that throughout, to see where their kids were at. So I think that would be a great way for us, as we advance in our technological use as teachers, to also do that as leaders and make sure that our kids are getting the information in a different format. Our attendance, so we had summer school for six, eight. It was a half-day, so kids came in the morning, they had breakfast at school. We implemented a morning recess, which was a huge hit with the kids, because they got to get out and move when the weather was still nice. And then, again, they had those three classes. We had 281 students register. And I think we had about 100, and this was a question, I think, that Dr. Roby sent to us. 281 registered, and I think we had about 188 on average for that first week. And from what I'm hearing from Ryan Thinky, that's not an anomaly at the middle school, because kids sign up in February, and lots of times, schedules change between February and June. And so we didn't have everybody show up. But we did have an average daily attendance of 176 kids. And this is also in my notes at the end, but one thing I think we could work on in terms of getting more of that 281 in the door would possibly be to just hire somebody in a clerical position for maybe the first two days to make some phone calls and do some outreach. We have some really fantastic outreach workers at the middle school. And, you know, we were kind of swamped with just registration and getting kids into the classroom. And I think to maybe put that in the hands of somebody who's already really connected with our families to get those kiddos in the door would be a great way to, to boost our attendance and reach more of our students in a positive way. So in terms of our instruction, when we look at our sixth grade, I would really like to see our literacy skills boosted by attendance in summer. So I wasn't super thrilled with 53%. However, when I looked at the data and looked at how many kids grew in at least one area or more, 93% of our kids found greater success in one area. In terms of social-emotional, what I found when I looked over the ILPs is that lots of our kids were already meeting those social-emotional goals at the start of summer school, which really excited me, and I think it tells us that we're doing something right in elementary school. So there wasn't as much room for growth in that area, which was really pleasing to see. And then math was a little bit better. And then seven, eight, again, our seventh and eighth grade. So it says STEM and SEL growth for seventh and eighth grade, that third column over would reflect their STEM growth for the year. They really did a great job in math again, and I think that's really a testament to the math staff that we had. We had some seasoned math instructors. A lot of our literacy instructors were newer to the profession, and I think by recruiting earlier and getting some seasoned Richfield teachers into those positions, it will really give us a chance to grow those literacy skills moving forward. But again, we can see that 93% of our seventh and eighth graders grew in one area, and 60% grew in two or more. And again, this is overall performance. For everybody. In terms of staffing, we were a little bit smaller than elementary. We had 12 licensed secondary teachers, one EL teacher, and then two instructional parent professionals and one clerical. And then I was the coordinator, and Michelle Tomke assisted with special ed. We had some pretty, I think, positive results from staff in terms of their ability to prepare. So 75% strongly agreed that they were provided with enough time to be ready. 12% agreed with that. And again, all positive in terms of clear communication throughout summer schools. I think that was also positive. Pretty strong satisfaction, a couple, I think, we had a couple teachers who were really new, and that created some challenges. But I think overall, we had a really positive relationship with kids and really committed staff. And then this was kind of the anecdotal feedback that we received from staff. And again, overall, I think it was a very positive experience, and teachers grew during that time. And I think that was helpful for everybody and for the kids. One big concern that teachers shared kind of across the board, they're hoping to offer more classes for students. We offered three long classes this year, and I think some of the feedback indicated that teachers felt if kids could have four classes instead of three, we could shorten up the classes and perhaps offer some classes where kids could do a little bit more moving around. And again, that team-building was really successful, I think, because kids were outdoors, they were up and moving around, they were in the gym. And I think if we could offer a little bit more of that, it would developmentally support the need our kids have to not only communicate with each other, but have fun together and interact with their teachers in a, in a different kind of way than you do when you're sitting in a desk or in a regular classroom. And again, I'd like to see us expand that partnership with the YMCA, Best Buy Corporation. Ideally, I think, to get kids into the community more often is a really great way to engage their learning and to just show them what else is outside of their school doors. And then again, to utilize that technology piece, not only for the data collection, but even for things like scheduling and family communication. I think that would just strengthen the program and keep kids and families engaged. Questions about middle school?
Question about middle school, and I'm not sure if it's related to what you were talking about, the February sign-up date. So I don't know if it's actually a broader question, are all of the programs February sign-up dates?
I learned through my first time going that for the Spartan Camp, I thought, I think that that'll be more of a February. Credit recovery is a, let's see where that is.
And it's, I should say too, that it starts in February, usually with our, that spring conference date at the middle school, which is usually middle of February. So we do have a heap of families who turn in that form at that point, but then we continue to take those through May. So, you know, that's where I think we might lose some of our, our families from that big window. And I think it's still important to do, but to perhaps include a little bit of communication in the meantime to, so that they remember that they're signed up and we're still on, and there are lots of things that are offered for their kids.
That totally makes sense, and thank you for clarifying that. Because I was thinking, how can we be more nimble later into the school year in terms of responding to what people's needs are going to be in the summer? As you said, where students are ending the school year, so that's helpful to hear. And I also know that there's a pressure of being prepared staffing-wise for how many students are signing up. So I know you're balancing a lot of things, especially with a registration window that long.
One of the things I was mentioning with the technology pieces, we've been working with Corey about getting targeted services on the website so parents and families can find that information, and it's really there.
Just to piggyback on Crystal's question, is the staffing determined by the registration or the actual attendees?
It's determined by the registration, however, after the first week of classes, we readjust based on actual staff, or actual students.
And I think at the middle school, just knowing from past, this number wasn't an anomaly. So I think they try to kind of project, but also, you know, we don't want to overstaff. And so we were really shooting for like a 15 to one ratio, and we were pretty close.
And also, when you get to the secondary level, as, and trustable as it becomes a little bit as well, it depends on where you need teachers for the particular content area that students may be lacking credits to. So there has to be some flexibility around that too.
So I appreciate that you mentioned the individual learning plans and the, perhaps being able to better utilize those down the road. Because a lot of effort, I would think, goes into that, they look pretty complex. But the, the teachers that those students have in the next school year could really benefit from all that information. So I like that you're headed down that road.
Thank you.
All right, on to the high school summer programs. This summer, we ran two programs. The first that we'll talk about is our credit recovery program, and it's an independent study. So the students work at their own pace on a computer program, currently they're using Odysseyware. They, usually, we tell them to shoot for just one credit, because it's only five weeks. And so that's a very short amount of time to work on a whole semester's worth of credit. The way the, skip it down here, or it's not, it's on there, but, so there it is, bottom. The schedule's 7:30 to 12:00. So what we typically do is they get put into one course, no matter how many credits they need to work on. Because what we've found is if they focus on that one course, they're more likely to finish that credit that they're working on, or at least get much further along, versus working on two or three courses and having just a tiny portion done. That doesn't do them much help there. They can access Odysseyware outside of school, however, there are certain blocks that pop up that they'll need teacher assistance. So that is a little limited, but they can, if they're really motivated, do some work outside of school. We ran with four licensed teachers, so we went with the core areas. We don't really do electives in summer school. However, I will make an exception, I did have a couple kids that needed an elective, like that was all they needed. So we can make exceptions for that, and the program that we use has that in, so we can do electives. So we had 131 students registered, which, the reason for that is we tried a different registration process. What I had the counselors do is go through all their students that they were assigned and look at who was missing credit, and just fill out a form for them. Because in the past, we've just had kids show up at summer school on the first day or somewhere in the middle, and we have no counselor verification forms, which we have to have for lots of reasons. One, to make sure we have them in the right courses. And so there were 131 students that the counselors projected shouldn't have been in there. And some of those kids actually registered themselves, and their parents registered them, and others were counselor references. So of the 131, 85 students started with us, which, when you think about, it's the summer, these are high schoolers, a lot of them have jobs. They also have, know that they have other credit recovery options during the school year, so you don't get all of those. But 85 is a pretty decent number of students to show up. You can kind of see there, our daily attendance. Because high schoolers have a lot of options of things to do in the summer, work, there's a lot of athletic camps and things going on. They kind of, they come in and out, and it is self-paced. So sometimes we don't have a consistent 85 kids there, we had an average 40. Of that 40, we had 10 credits earned, which is down from last year. And there was a couple reasons that I could attribute that to. Partly, we had fewer kids coming in who had already made progress on a credit. So if they do Thursday school or credit recovery during the day, they can carry that into the summer. Most of the students who started with us this summer were starting from 0% progress. So you're starting from zero in five weeks is a little harder to get to that end game, which is actually why I'm looking at possibly switching our curriculum delivery. I don't know exactly what that's going to look like. Just feedback from students, the way the current program is set up, it's really hard to stay focused for four and a half hours on that one subject. It's like the English, for example, is very text-heavy. So if you have a student who obviously struggles academically, that's why they are credit efficient. Staring at all that text can be kind of difficult. So looking at some different ways we can make the learning more accessible to them so that they can recover their credits better. The other program we ran this summer is Spartan Camp, and that's incoming ninth graders. So they're technically middle schoolers still, but we're trying to make them less middle schoolers and more high schoolers. So when they come in, the real focus of the program is to give them a little taste. So when they come in, the real focus of the program is to give them a little taste of what the expectations are of academics at the high school. But we don't go too hard because it is the summer. We'd like them to stay for the three weeks that the program runs. But we do give them a little bit of a taste. We also do a lot of things with Fidel Horizon and with the buildings. We do building tours. We had the Lawrence Algado, who's the health mentor, come in and do some health relationships as well as show them how to access the health center in the building. We did some things on the different programs that they can join, not just athletics, but all of our other amazing extracurriculars that they can join at the high school. Do a lot with tech, since we had access to Chromebooks and knowing that the one-to-one was coming, making sure that they were able to utilize Google Classroom, some of the basic things that they'll probably encounter once they're here. Just, we ran a schedule, it's half-day, so modified, but they rotated through their classrooms just like they would in a high school, how to try to mimic some of those pieces. We had 64 students registered and 45 started. And this actually has to do to me being new, not quite understanding the timeline here. So middle school students are used to getting things about summer school much earlier. I wasn't actually carried yet when they're used to getting that stuff. So this stuff got to them a little later. And what happened is, we had some kids who thought they might, and then they didn't get some communication from me until later. And so they signed up for other summer programs. So it wasn't a huge, as big of a drop from the credit recovery. But we had 45, which is about how many students we had last year. Maybe five or six less. Right, 26 students aren't credit, so they do get credit for this. It's an elective credit. And in order to get credit though, they have to be there every day. And they have to do all the work that's required because it's only like 12 days of course. So we do have some students that aren't quite ready for that because they are incoming eighth graders. So we do have some students who don't earn credit. Doesn't hurt them any. It's only going to benefit them if they can earn that. And even if they don't earn the credit, they do get that experience. So they may not end up with anything on their transcript. But if you talk to them, a lot of them talked about feeling more prepared. So we did a lot of question and answer sessions, feeling more prepared about the building, that they were certain things were, they got the idea that the building was broken up into, like all of the English classes were over here and all their like classes. So if you get lost, where do you go? If you have English, go to this wing. So they knew those kind of pieces. So even, so the credit doesn't necessarily reflect what those students got out of the program. And then they ran the same schedule as the credit recovery as well. I don't have any cool data to show you what these awesome guys, because there's not the required by MDD or 37 that relates to testing.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so that's an update on our targeted services and our summer school. Next, just a brief run-through of some of the work we're doing in innocent classroom. And Dr. Roby is going to step up and just walk quickly through our training plan. And our goal, if you recall this year, is to make sure that all of our staff are through initial training by the end of the school year. Dr. Roby?
Thank you, coordinators. Nice job. And so I just want to briefly say, also, we will be meeting this fall. We talked about kind of doing, once summer school was completed, to kind of do some planning for the summer of 2019. And we'll be doing that now that we're back in school and in session. All of the coordinators, with the exception, two of the four coordinators, this was their first time leading a program. So their learning curve, I was very pleased with the work that they did and they kind of just jumped right in. Okay, innocent classroom. And so one of the directives that the board has given to the superintendent and our management team is to make sure that all of our staff have been trained in innocent classroom. And as you can see, we do have a schedule by building as well as our management team members' training for the year. And the goal is to make sure that each building site and leader in the building has an opportunity to experience innocent classroom. Prior to the first day of school, everybody has gone through kind of the introduction to innocent classroom at their building site. We have asked for them to differentiate because some of our staff have gone through innocent classroom through Learning Academy. And so we understand that it's not, it's a way of thinking versus a program. And we're talking about equity and how do we allow students to show their best self and to kind of present who they are. That's an ongoing conversation. And so we're asking those staff members who have participated previously in innocent classroom, as well as building leaders, to kind of help facilitate conversations and have it embedded in just throughout the work that they do. And so that's just kind of a very brief overview of kind of what we are doing to make sure that it becomes a way of practice and being in our district. Questions that I can answer?
I have a tangential, I said that wrong, tangential?
I got you.
Thank you. And so if you don't know the answer to it right now, that's totally understandable. But with, up to this point, you know, as we have been pursuing innocent classroom, we've also said if there are other trainings or resources that our staff want to pursue, that we will of course support that. So I know we had people who were still doing things like Beyond Diversity. With WMEP now dissolved or dissolving, because I think it's sort of in the act of winding down right now, are there still other trainings or programs that are available for staff who want to do things in addition to this?
Yes. And so, and several of us have continued to do our own learning and growing. And innocent classroom is one of the things that we are asking our staff to do kind of holistically so that we have the same common language. But I think many of our staff members have taken on that challenge of, how do I get, continue to be better and engage with my families and the students that I'm supporting in a different way? And so Minnesota Humanity Center is one program that is available to people in our, who are, you know, in the area. Also, the Science Museum. There's a thing around equity and how do you engage in conversations? So those are just two that I can think of off the top of my head. The University of Minnesota also has several programs that people can participate in. So there's lots of different things. And oftentimes, and I should have said this, we have a small group of like-minded staff members who are trying to develop an equity team. And how do we kind of support one another as well as kind of branch it out into each individual school building so that we are used as a resource? Not that we are the experts, because I don't know that you can be an expert completely on anything. But just being a resource available to our staff. So as people are kind of going through their journey of deepening their own knowledge base, they have a like-minded or a person that they can ask how to kind of engage or what are some other resources that are available. And so we're trying to create a system where we are providing that support, but then also continuing our own, our own journey.
That's really helpful.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, so then last piece of the superintendent's report. We are members of the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, AMSD. You will see their election guide in there, a packet related to education issues. And we work together as a consortium of metropolitan school districts to collaborate around education issues and the things that are important to us. They share in this packet a set of information for candidates. They share some things for us to be aware of, general facts and figures around education. And there's just a couple of pieces in here, and this is just meant as an information component. But a couple of things I just want to point our attention to because as we look to an election system occurring in 2018 in November, there's a couple of points that they are asking us, and I think they're very important for us to walk through as we do have conversations with our legislators or people who are running for office. I mean, there's a lot of conversation around education funding. And so one point that we've talked in unified voice on is just sort of that reminder that the basic education formula continues to lag behind inflation. And so as we think about the conversation about how funding continues to increase to education, that would be accurate if one chooses to look at it that way. That actually is noted by the dashed green line. And so you can see that since 2003, on the left of our screen, the dollar figure was significantly lower than the dollar figure is today. And so funding has absolutely significantly increased in the last, in the last set of years. The red line, however, is also the rate of inflation. And so it's important for us to just continually point out that had the funding, which has yes, increased, just met the same growth that inflation had. The funding formula, the basic formula will be $618 per people hired today, but it just kept up with inflation. So that is about $2.5 million towards our students. And so it's quite a significant amount of funding that we will be looking towards. It's actually larger than the entire referendum that we asked for from an operational perspective. And so that's kind of the difference between now and 2003 and the overall implication of inflation. The other basic component we also talk about is that the state falls significantly short of paying for the special education mandates. So special education is something that involves the individual education plans for students with needs that are identified from a special ed perspective. They are both federally required, they are state-required, and they're also something that's important to note that we believe in providing services to all of our students and everything that they do need. However, there is a very significant gap between the funding that is there and the cost of special education. And so it is projected to grow to $698 million. And that's the difference between the services provided to special education students and the funding provided by the state. And that significant large gap, similar to also the inflationary gap, continues to grow because funding in special education has not been growing significantly. And yet, the needs of students have continued to grow. And the expectations within special education have continued to grow. So two of those very large areas of stress on public schools are things that we want to make sure that our legislators and our elected officials are aware of as we engage in those conversations. Those are just the two things in the packet from AMSD that I wanted to point out and provide that as it is a pretty significant set of information around the election coming up in 2018.
With AMSD having sort of published this, is the association going to be doing work to gather information from various candidates on their answers to these questions? Or is this just purely, this is for school boards and communities to do with what they will?
I think they do do some of that work. But part of their work is educating school boards and educating superintendents to have this information. They have been asked to have this in a ready, ready available packet that can be distributed. They do have, and I believe there are, I don't know, I don't believe I have the links into it here, but there are some videos that they've created describing the special education cross-subsidy and some videos talking about what is school funding and why is that different? Then we might understand it as. And so they have done some things to sort of help out and help people understand. They also publish a wide range of resources and share information about candidates, but they're very careful not to push any candidates themselves.
A lot of this comes from the Delegated Assembly in December, where all the school boards from all over Minnesota come over and bring resolutions. The last two years, the one about meeting the unfunded mandate of special education has been one of their strongest points. And then that's what is the platform for the upcoming session.
So that would definitely, yeah, from an MSBA Minnesota School Association perspective, covering the entire state and then AMSD covering the metro. And there's firmly substantial alignment between the platforms of those two organizations.
Absolutely. They've done some very deliberate effort to try to align political platforms in the last several years so that educators across the state are speaking in one voice. And so things like keeping up with inflation and special education cross-subsidy are issues that actually face every single district in the entire state of Minnesota. And so MSBA can talk about that from a school board's perspective, and so from the Association of School Administrators, so can Education Minnesota, and so can all of the educators in whatever role or people participating in the education process.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the current AMSD publication is as much a voter informational guide, so it's not necessarily saying what candidate to vote for, but these are the issues that are pertinent to education and as you explore the position of candidates in your district, these are topics to go there.
All right. Okay, so we will move on to commendations.
All right, so commendation out to rich young high school teachers Kitty Catherine Payne and Chris Peterson, who applied to participate in the Gilder Lehrman Hamilton Education Program. And it allows Title I schools who study American history to have the opportunity to go see Hamilton and integrate the show into their classroom studies. And so you may have already heard about this, but our entire high school 11th grade students will be seeing the musical on October 4th. And they'll also complete a research project on a figure in the American Revolutionary War. One of the additional bonuses is they're actually going to have a Q and A after the performance with members of the cast. So it's just a great opportunity for our students to see Hamilton. And something that goes on in our pop culture that is an amazing and culturally relevant way to really connect students to American history and the Revolutionary War. So commendations out to that high school team.
I'm so jealous.
And for the fundraising they're doing so that it is free of charge to all students.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda.
I'll move to the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Baraki. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda passes. We have no old business, we will move on to new business and Board Policy 586.1 Guidelines for Gender Inclusion.
All right, so as the board had requested, guidelines or a very first draft of 586 guidelines in relation to gender inclusion are in front of you. I'm calling it a very first draft because this is, we'll call it a comprehensive compilation of the gender inclusion pieces that are out there. And so you will see how we work together with policies from some other districts, MDE, our attorney Laura Booth, just to sort of combine and merge multiple policies. We're also in the midst of development of a gender support plan, which is talked about in that policy. And then also, if there is a request for name or gender change. And so we're working on some of those and wanted to give you a, like I said, a very first read of a comprehensive plan, something that'll be pared down and worked on over the next couple of weeks. It has been gone through by our Head of Special Education, our Head of Special Programs, and our Director of Student Support Services, along with some of the support members at the high school. And then we will also work on this with the Safe and Supportive Schools Group prior to bringing it back to the board. We just wanted to give you a glance.
Thank you. And thanks for taking what I imagine are some different ideas that you've heard from us and from all of the people already into consideration for version two.
And further questions on that?
So I, in lieu of asking questions, I mean, the expectation is that the guidelines will be, well, actually, maybe I'm wrong on this, the expectation may be wrong because of course guidelines don't necessarily require board approval. Is there an expectation that when the guidelines are finished, they will be coming back?
Yes, yes. So if there are things, as board members have time to review guidelines, I encourage feedback. They will have significant revision prior to coming back to the board. And I just wanted to share out that work has begun in this category. But we also do, while they are not officially approved, we do bring them back to the board to look at and give sort of that commitment to those guidelines to make sure that they meet the vision, the expectation of this team as we do with all the guidelines.
So we will move on to the Metro EXU-Sourcwell Joint Powers Agreement.
All right, so this is a unique, a unique piece. So we are members of Metro ECSU. I'm actually, was just elected or appointed to their executive board. They are in partnership with Sourcwell Ties. And so this is, I'll call this a very logistic type of approval they are asking for. So Sourcwell, which is now the owner or has taken over Ties, has asked the leader of ECSU to sit on their advisory board and on their governing board. The only way they are allowed to do that is if we are approving of that. And so I had before you today, the opportunity for the leader of Metro ECSU, which is Julie Frame, she's the administrator. By us approving this one- Frame, she's the administrator, by us approving, this would allow her to sit on the advisory board of Sourswell. From our perspective, what this does, also because we're connected to ECSUs, it gives us an additional voice in the ongoing evolution of Sourswell, which, as you recall, took over for what Ties was doing. And so this is just an added way that we can have that foot in the door and the voice at the table in regard to what's happening with them. It does not obligate us to do anything, it does not obligate us to remain members of Sourswell, it doesn't do anything other than allow ECSU to sit in that role and that capacity as an advisory member of their board.
Can you give a 60 to 90 second overview of what Metro ECSU is and does?
Yes, so they are a, they are a collaborative of educational districts, they provide professional development opportunities at either no or low cost to all of their member districts. So some of our staff go to Metro ECSU staff development, they have a wide range of purchases and services that they do from a collaborative perspective, so we're able to buy services and products through them that are less expensive than other categories. They do a class size study as we look at where do we stand compared to others, and then an additional wide range of pieces. What I asked them to do, as I am due to their board, is create a video that describes just that, because one of the things that they said is people don't necessarily know who we are or what we do. And so my suggestion was they create a presentation that superintendents could give to their board that would lay all of that out.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. I mean, I've, I've served as liaison to Metro, thanks to you, for a number of years, and I also labor under some of the same, notes, yes, and even expressed it, some of the same lack of clarity at times. But I think the key piece, and this is where frankly gets confusing, is, is just that, as you said, that the obligation of Metro XU is really minimal, I mean, we're not talking about a financial obligation, it's really just simply that governor's piece and it's the appointing of not only Julie Frame, but then two other, there would be two voting members appointed by Metro XU in addition to the eight, the board would be consisted of eight members from the Sourswell board of directors, and then these two voting members from Metro XU, and then Julie as an ex officio director.
And just to be clear, this, we're being asked to do this just as members of the, of the collective and not because you're, you're now on the board, or is there, as a clarifying point?
That is correct. I am now on the board of Metro ECSU.
Yeah, but all.
That's not why.
All members, okay, all the members of the.
All members of Metro XU have to vote.
Yes, and they need a majority, they actually have, they needed 15 members, they actually have gotten to 15, we gave them a we're voting on it today response. So technically, they don't have to have what Ties had, which is 48 of 48, and so some of this is now a formality. Yes.
I love formalities.
Yes, it comes with absolutely zero obligation from our, from our side.
Yeah, I mean, my perspective on it had been, I guess, sometimes this is the way I look at this, is in the absence of a good reason to say no, I'm pretty much a yes on this one, so.
I will, I will move that we ratify the agreement as presented, as recommended.
I will second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pauls, a second by Mr. Ashmead, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the joint powers agreement passes. Thank you, we will move on to more new board policy reviews, starting with.
Actually, we have workers' comp insurance, did you want that up on the, on there or no?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Sorry.
So we, as we typically do, did a competitive review of available insurance policies, I'm looking at our workers' compensation, we'll be bringing some of the other property casualties up shortly as well. We are making a recommendation that we switch our workers' comp carrier to SFM from Travelers, which we had been with SFM about seven years ago, did some price comparisons at that point, and Travelers has been more competitive. This time, we're recommending that we go back to SFM. Both have been high-quality providers, we have the opportunity to save just under $17,000 next year by switching to SFM. One of the things that we feel like we get with SFM is we get a few more employer resources as far as ways that we can promote workplace safety and things like that, and so they have some advantages that way. Both have been high-qualified as far as working with our claims experiences and things like that as well. So with that, we are looking at a net reduction or slight reduction in our workers' compensation premium, from $380,000 to $376,000, that is including increased payroll projections as part of that workers' comp change. Travelers came in at a proposed amount of premium of $392,996 as part of that process. We worked with Todd Oz, who we worked with for a long time, in reviewing these claims and doing some competitive bidding, he fully concurs with this and is bringing that recommendation forward to the administration as well as to the board here. There's backup documentation for what each one of those provided as far as where their experiences were. There are some adjustments in the premiums in the different categories, it's not the easiest system to understand when you kind of drill it down, but when we look at the exact dollar amounts, that's kind of where we're looking at. These are anticipated premiums, actual premiums will be based on the final audit of our payroll for that 18, 19 plan year. With that, we're bringing that recommendation forward unless you have any questions.
I will move that we approve the workers' comp insurance with SFM. Second.
So a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and authorization for workers' compensation insurance passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holgy. Now, we will move on to board policy reviews, starting with Policy 506, Student Sex Nondiscrimination.
All right, and so Title IX of the Education Amendments in 1972, Minnesota Human Rights Act, laid out some clear expectations that all students are protected from discrimination on the basis of sex. Now, this is one of our older policies and certainly in need of review. And so as we work through gender and gender nondiscrimination and gender inclusion, we are looking to update our student sex nondiscrimination, and then we will also be moving on later this year towards other behavior and discipline policies. And so this particular policy outlines that we will support all students within our district and that we will not unlawfully discriminate, and that people will not be excluded from participation in programs or subject to discrimination. It lays out reporting grievance procedures, investigations, and some of the methodologies of what we would do in those types of situations, and then also what we will do in terms of dissemination of policy and evaluation. I'm just providing you with a first read of this policy, which was approved back in 2008. There's actually been some significant changes that will be coming in read number two, but just wanted to make sure that we were all familiar with Title IX and Policy 506 so that we may do that next step of revision. First read tonight.
So I had, I had mentioned a couple of things in email, so just updating Mr. Holgy's current title. And then in section E, I think it's three E, two, where is this posted? It says that the school district shall conspicuously post the name of the Title IX coordinator and human rights officer, including office mailing addresses and phone numbers. So I've never seen that posted, I'm just wondering where.
Much less significantly.
So you gave it a heads up on that, I looked around, and you need to be honest, I just don't know. And so that's, you know, amongst the, some of the older policies that we have, that's why they need to be reviewed, revised, and updated, and then we also want to make sure that we are complying with some of those components that are hidden in the lower pages sometimes of these policies.
I flagged the same items, including that, I think we moved away from naming individual staff numbers.
Yes.
Period, and just using titles, so I think those should.
Right, so if there are things as you read through this, that will also tell you there will be some significant updates, as obviously some, some laws have been passed and changed since 2008 in the original review of this particular policy.
Any further discussion?
And just as a process reminder, not that we don't all know this, but for those watching on camera and the millions watching on YouTube, we typically do at least three reads of a policy. It can be two, but usually if there is a significant change, that would come in through read number two, and then obviously we'd also take feedback and go on to read number three. Read number one is typically that, that first read review and just bringing it back out to say, hey, here's this policy, and we're, we're taking a look at that to make some changes and updates.
So we will move on to the first read of Policy 607, Online Learning Options.
All right, similarly, another one that made me chuckle because of the age, and so online learning, this one was actually rolled out in, I believe, 2005, just talking about how we will provide opportunities for online learning. Many of these and most of these are occurring actually through our partnership with 287, that has a very robust online learning-based program. You also heard some of the extended date, our extended school year programs that also provide some online learning opportunities to provide for credits. And so this, this outlines that we shall offer opportunities for students to gain credit online, and students can participate in extracurricular learning and also be considered full students whether they are here in person or taking some of those courses online. And so again, as you can guess, there are some pretty significant changes that have happened in online learning since 2005 when this policy was initiated, and you'll see some of those updated in our, in our second read.
Couple of questions that I have on, on this one. My first question is, when a student is enrolled in online courses?
Yes.
Does that in any way affect how they're counted as, as an ADM, as basically in terms of our formula allows?
So there is a complexity to that. Right now, most of our students engaged in online learning are in through our 287 partnership program. And so some of those are enrolled as 287 open enrolled students, and some of those students are enrolled as Ridgefield students. If we were having a student who is one of our regular students in our school program on a regular basis who is also in online learning and a program through us, they would also count for our ADM. If they were in a, there are other districts around the state who have a very robust online program recruit from across the state, if they were in one of those programs, they would actually be considered open enrolled and part of the ADM of that particular district. And so there are some complexities to that and very case specific.
But is part of your question just the weighting? Like whether online students carry the same weight as students?
Well, actually, no, well, that's an interesting question too. So they do, yes, they are considered regular students from a funding weighting perspective in that regard.
And the way I read the policy, and tell me if I'm reading it correctly, there would be no limit on how many online courses a particular student can choose to enroll in during any given term. So a student may be taking two, they may be taking their entire course load online.
According to the policy, yes, we do not have any of those cases at this point.
Right.
But yes.
But the policy, the policy certainly doesn't, the policy doesn't endorse a limit, and at least it implicitly suggests that limiting, limiting online opportunities would be counter to the spirit of the policy, if not to the letter of it.
Agreed.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that would be a place where I guess I would suggest taking a look at our practices and see if our practices align with policy.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can then in section D, part five, where it says that online learning that meets or exceeds graduation standards or graduation progress required equals standard met. So my question would be, how do we, how is this decided? What kind of documentation do we have of that? How do we track that?
I will check.
Because it just seems a little ambiguous. Anyone else have questions? So again, that's the first read, so we will come back to some definite changes for the second read.
Absolutely, definite changes and updates. Yep.
So we will move on to Policy 955, Fundraising Activities.
All right, and then similarly, and obviously very timely as we talk about things like Hamilton, fundraising for school-related purposes, and so the general policy talking about how we support the idea of fundraising, but then also talking about having some processes and approvals that are required, and then also how student involvement would look in terms of fundraising and how it would not necessarily look, and then also what employees' roles are in that category. And so this is also something that Mr. Holgy and the finance team on this one will be looking at to make sure that it aligns to current, current laws and current practices as we update our fundraising policy. And then also the corresponding guideline, 955.1, which lays it out even further in terms of what are employees' roles and responsibilities, because the goal is to make sure that people don't get into awkward situations if they are participating in fundraisers, and they're, they're doing those as part of their, their goal of raising funds for our students. It also lays out specific guidelines for federated fundraisers or fundraisers as a group, and also how we might partner with organizations and agencies who will be helping us in a fundraising capacity. And so you'll see us taking a look at the overall policy and then also that overall guideline to make sure that we are up to date with current accounting standards.
One, one piece that struck me is, would be section C, or letter C under section one, which talks, specifically reads that fundraising or related activity can be conducted with minimal student involvement, minimal loss of instructional time, and minimal endorsement of products. I would suggest that those would be areas where we either want to take a look at our current practices to see if we think they line up, or we need to be a little bit more clear what minimal means.
The area that I was looking at too is just the approval process and how we are in such a different world with online fundraising and for websites like Donors Choose, where teachers are raising funds for classroom supplies or libraries or whatever it may be, what it looks like for a building principal to sort of have a window in or approval responsibility, or then for the superintendent for things at the district level. So I know that's one of the things that I, I'm just very curious to see what the next iteration of this will look like with respect to that.
I brought up similar issues.
And I guess, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm mainly thinking about, mainly thinking about our booster clubs as being the probably biggest fundraisers, biggest fundraising activity. So this might be one, I don't know if this would be one to actually bring to your extracurricular advisory group to solicit some input from folks who have direct on-the-ground experience with kind of what works and what has been successful so that we don't inadvertently, you know, so that we don't sort of inadvertently take steps that we would, that would have consequences that we don't intend, I guess.
I mean, those groups are typically not in the classroom time, right?
Correct.
I mean, there are still things to address, I think, and I think it would be helpful to have.
Yeah, absolutely. We will, we'll let you be meeting next week, so be able to give some input prior to the next iteration.
I don't know, I don't know if that's, is that specifically indicated as a limitation of where this policy applies?
At present, not fully. If you were to take a look, if you would consider student involvement through an external booster club, so it, it's complex.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So certainly, this is specific to school-based fundraisers, and there's some, as I read it the first time, there's some ambiguity between if a PTO is leading a fundraiser and students end up involved outside of school because their parents are in the PTO, does that count? Or a booster club, if, if a athletic team's booster club is having them sell, you know, like the football team selling cards, is that governed by this policy or is it not? And so I think either way, we need to, we need to create some clarity that I'm not sure is in this particular policy.
So we'll look forward to more information on that, and we will move on to donations.
All right, and so we had a couple of donations in this meeting. We had Twin City Transportation donating five 27-inch monitors to the Ridgefield Public Schools Transportation Department, using for office use and also for our routing. And then also Helen Matheson donated $25 to the Ridgefield Public Schools Sunshine Lunch Account. And so we are thankful to both Twin City Transportation and also Helen Matheson. And so we are thankful to both Twin City Transportation and also Helen Matheson.
Will we accept these donations with gratitude?
Second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Brocki. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we will accept these donations with gratitude. We will move on to advance planning and the legislative update.
All right, so you saw the elections packet in the board. We are beginning to have a legislative executive conversation in AMSD about legislative platform, and so it should be in the position where we begin that conversation, I believe, at our next meeting, to talk about what our legislative platform is, and if there are specific things that we want to really focus on as we bring in our legislators for future conversation as we look to the election and we look beyond. And so just a heads up that we will be having a conversation about our legislative platform in the coming meeting.
Thank you, and we will move to information and questions from the board.
I have one, first day of school appreciation from our district partner 287. And so one of the things that the superintendent has had multiple conversations with our superintendent team about is transportation of students who enroll in 287 ALC programs, and that transportation not being provided has been a really significant barrier to student attendance and student ability to really sort of see the program through and get the credits that they need and ultimately graduate. And so I know that she has deep appreciation for Steve and his leadership because Ridgefield was one of the very first districts to respond to say that we will support transportation for Ridgefield students who are attending the South Education Center ALC program through 287. And so she sent an email today, which was the first day of school for them, and so I'll just read it because it's really short. She sent it to Steve and then she forwarded it to me, so I was aware of it. "I'm sitting in the parking lot at SEC and wanted to reach out to you before leaving. Our ALC staff were over the top elated with the difference transportation made today for the ALC students coming from Ridgefield. I truly believe that many of those students would not have shown up today had it not been for your buses. Thanks for making it happen." So I just think it's a great example of supporting our partner and doing what is in the best interest ultimately of our students, so thank you.
Thanks for sharing that, that's, that's great.
I have nothing.
Thanks for sharing that with us. So we will move on to future meeting dates. Our next meeting will be September 17th, a regular meeting of the board, including public comments, followed by an October 1st meeting, just a regular meeting of the board without public comment. And we will move, does anyone have any suggested or future agenda?
I'll share one that I already flagged for Steve, but as part of our staffing update that we do at the beginning or a little bit into the new school year, I would love to hear more about the Grow Your Own program and the first cohort of participants from our district in that program through the U.
And we will bring that back to the board. We are looking at, from a U's perspective, we actually have some scholarship opportunities. We're looking, we actually were meeting today talking about doing some of that last work to craft that MOA with our teachers' union to make sure that we can have all those details hammered exactly out for some staff that may be starting what we have, some that may be starting in this spring. So it's exciting opportunities we look to the future.
Yes, we've had some great events, the Welcome Back event and the New Teacher event in the past couple of weeks that have been very inspiring, a really amazing group of people with a lot of experience, the new teachers that we brought in. That is all. Would anyone like to make the final motion?
Move that we adjourn.
I will second the motion.
A motion by Mr. Pauls, a second by Mr. Tensing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we are adjourned.